Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda this evening is the Lupavitch Yeshiva International School for Kachab Leadership, Southfield menorah lighting, and we'll have a presentation by Rabbi Mendelstein? Is that correct?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council President, Council members. It is great to be here again, just before the holiday season, and in honor of the Jewish holiday of Hanukkah, I want to invite all of you and all the members of our community to a grand menorah lighting in exactly one week from tonight, December 3rd, 5:30 PM, just outside these doors. Rain or shine, we've been through it all.
Yes, you have.
We've had warm weather, we've had cold weather, we've had ice, we've had snow. So, we will be there no matter what. And that's actually the message of Hanukkah, as I say every year, but it's still very important, that no matter how dark and how challenging the world is outside, we gotta go out, even when it's hard, and spread a little bit of light, because even a little bit of light can dispel a lot of darkness. And coming in recent weeks from the unfortunate tragedy that has happened to the Jewish community in Pittsburgh, during the menorah lighting, we will recognize our first responders locally, which many of us may take for granted that we just have them, but they are there for us day and night, through thick and through thin. So, I look forward to recognizing that and showing our appreciation for everything we have here in this great city, specifically the first responders who are there for us. We're gonna have a lively fire show. This year, we're gonna have two presenters who are gonna display a beautiful fire show for us. We'll have hot soup, and of course, we'll have the students, the energetic young students from the Lubavitch Yeshiva in Oak Park, who will be here to help us all be happy and dance together with music, and everybody's welcome to come.
All right. Thank you.
Did all of you get the flyers in your handouts? Okay, thanks. We hope to see you all there, and we will be there. Thank you very much.
Could you tell the listening audience one more time what time it is?
Yes, it is in one week from tonight, Monday night, December 3rd, starting at 5:30 PM. The program will not be very long because it is outside, and we don't know what the weather will be like, so usually the program is around a half hour. You're welcome to come and park in the parking lot, and come out of your vehicle on time, but you don't have to get out too early, and we will start promptly, and we will keep everybody warm with the warm soup and warm spirit.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of October 15th, 2018.
Can we hold on one second on that? If we wanna do appointments first, we need to, for President Pro Tem, we did do a straw vote in our study session, but we need to make a formal vote here, so, again, I'd like to open up the nominations for President Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Ficassi.
I move that Lenny Taylor be nominated for President Pro Tem.
All right. Any other nominations? It's been properly moved by Mr. Ficassi and seconded by Mr. Mandelbaum, and Lenny Taylor serve as the next President Pro Tem for the Southfield City Council. All those in favor, taken by by aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. As is our tradition, we'll have her take her seat here, and thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum, for your time as Pro Tem last year as well. Much appreciated.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Ms. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of October 15th, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Morrison, supported by, seconded by Councilman Birkwell, that we approve the regular meetings minutes of October 15th. All those in favor? Any opposed? Guys, have it. Can I get a motion on the October 22nd?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the meeting minutes, the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 22nd.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2018. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, very good. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Just have a few items here that I'll just read briefly for you as we move forward. First one is Consent Agenda Item A, the extension of site plan approval for Cornerstone Commons. This one, Calabat Engineering is requesting that we extend approval of the site plan review request for the master plan development of Phase 1 gas station with ancillary retail sales and future developments of the retail outlets, a multi-story residential facility and office building on the north side of West 8 Mile Road between Northland Drive and Rutland Street. The site plan was originally approved by the City Council on September 26th of 2016. There are no proposed changes to the site plan proposal, and it complies with zoning ordinance requirements. The planning department recommends an extension of said approvals through, up until June 1st, Agenda Item B, authorization to purchase forestry body with toolbox attachment for the Streets and Highway Department. The 2018-19 budget to purchase forestry body with toolbox attachments to be used with the M2 freight lifter SWAT load truck in the Streets and Highway Department, which was purchased in 2016. The skid-mounted forestry body is removable and will be used for additional DPW brush chipping operations. The cost for the ArborTech forestry body and toolbox attachments, $15,785. Funding is provided by the 2018-2019 motor pool equipment replacement account as identified in the resolution. Agenda Item C, received proposals for vending machine services. The purchasing department received proposals on August 10th from companies interested in providing vending machine services. Twenty-two machines will be placed at eight locations throughout the city, including the Pavilion, Beechwood Recreation Center, and Civic Center Sports Arena. Three responses were received from Modern Vending of Troy, Corporate Dining of Rochester Hills, and Healthy Fresh Vending of Pontiac. The proposals were evaluated in three main categories, commission, product mix, and equipment, and capacity to provide the full scope of services. Fiscal impact, the proceeds from the contract contribute to the revenue stream of the Parks and Recreation Department. Under the new contract, the city will receive 25% of sales according to the rate scheduled and based on the product type and gross sales. The city earned commissions of $5,557 for fiscal year June 30, 2018. The recommendation is for Modern Vending of Troy, who presented the proposal, that most closely met the city's needs. Agenda Item D, Southfield Police Department and Custodial Services for Police Buildings. The Southfield Police Department is seeking approval of custodial services agreement with the Southfield Police Headquarters and Downtown Police Station. The awarded company will furnish all labor, equipment, supplies, and supervision necessary to provide adequate services to the city, adequate services, and the city will supply water and electricity and a closet room to store specific equipment. The recommended contractor shall employ trained, reliable, quality-conscious custodians and supervisors. The services requested include, but are not limited to, cleaning of floors, locker rooms, office areas, the detention facility, windows, bathrooms, spot cleaning, dusting, and emergency cleanup. The fiscal impact is, of this bid, is $153,271.96. The award requested will not exceed $160,000. Funding in the amount of $79,000 is available in the account listed here in the packet for the remainder of the current fiscal year, and the contract total will be requested in future budgets as council may approve. Agenda Item E, the agreement with Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation for Municipal Community Credit Service and Funding Contract. In accordance with the municipal and community credits master agreement made and entered into between the City of Southfield and Suburban Mobility Authority Regional Transportation, or SMART, in 1998, the allocated funding coming through SMART for senior transportation services covering the one-year period, July 1st, 2018 through July 30, 2019, is $191,182. The fiscal impact is the $70,566 in municipal credits and $120,616 in community credits that the city is eligible for are specifically designated to cover costs incurred from transportation services provided to Southfield seniors, the physically disabled, the mentally challenged residents of Southfield, as well as charter services for trips to include, but not limited to, shopping, lunch, and dinner excursions. These funds are instrumental in our ability to meet the everyday needs of our residents who have no other means of transportation. The service runs Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with scheduled evening and weekend programs. Recommendation is that the council adopt the recommendation, resolution of authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the SMART municipal and community credit contract formalizing the program activity for 2018 and 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, D, N, E as presented.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, that we approve the Consent Agenda Items A through E. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Consent Agenda is now approved. We'll now move to the, we have a one public hearing this evening. Mr. Crowe?
Our public hearing deals with PSLU 18-0008, zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title 5, zoning and planning of Chapter 45 zoning of the code of the City of Southfield. This was discussed in length at your study session last week. These text amendments specifically address amending the zoning ordinance to address the following: updating definitions for adult retail stores, ancillary sales, bed breakfast, and restaurants; prohibiting outside non-auto-related amenities at gas stations; providing regulations for unattended collection bins; providing regulations and provisions for bed breakfast operations; within the regional center parking requirements and parking dimension cleanup; shopping center language cleanup, so we no longer will require special land use for a restaurant if it's in a shopping center less than four units; off-street parking layout, restaurant uses, and then height requirements for clock and bell towers. What started all this early in the summer was a charge from the Legislative Committee that came out of Code's Department reviewing Section 5.169 of the zoning ordinance. There shall be no outside storage or display of any kind except for the display of new merchandise related to the primary use of gas station for retail sales during the hours of operation of the gas station. When we did an inventory of the 38 gas stations within the city, we found that 17 or 45% were non-compliant regarding ice chests, and 21 or 55% were compliant regarding ice chests. They had interior ice chests or no outside ice chests. This was an extensive review of all existing stations. We also looked at other non-compliant issues with regard to non-auto-related outside storage. We brought this back to the Legislative Committee twice and then a full study session, and these are examples of gas stations that are in compliance. Also note that the accessible pathways to the main entrance of the building are clear and free from any obstructions. These are examples of previously unregulated or not meeting the requirements for outside storage, as well as the ice chests themselves not being barrier-free and accessible. Based on the recommendations of the Legislative Committee, we were going to enforce the gas station exterior storage uses and remove the regulations from the gas station definitions and put them into the appropriate sections, and clarifying what outside sales are permitted. We also looked at the previously unregulated unattended collection bins, and we are now classifying them as outside storage. We have a set of proposed regulations with regards to the definition of unattended collection bins, adding unattended collection bins to the existing outside storage section, applying requirements retroactively to all unattended collection bins, requiring the planning department to provide administrative review for the placement, which includes line of sight clearance, screening. They cannot take up a required parking space. They cannot impede pedestrian or vehicular traffic. They have to provide a description or diagram of a locking mechanism, a maintenance plan, and based on other ordinances that we reviewed with the city attorneys throughout the country, start with allowance of one unattended collection bin per parcel unless documented evidence suggests a second one is required, and then providing a process for those to be approved. Both unattended collection bins must have the same operator. We also brought to your attention that there was concern and actually a bona fide proposal to purchase the McDonald House, which is one of our four historic structures in the city, to tear it down for multiple family, and working with the Historic Commission, the recommendation was to allow for, in a very limited capacity, the provision and regulations of bed and breakfast at documented historic sites. And these are the current four historic sites within the city. We also had some cleanup of some language that when we did our overhaul of our parking standards, there was a few things with the text in the tables that didn't quite match up, so we're cleaning up that language. This is the provision of allowing restaurants by right, if they don't have a drive-through, they're not 24-hour operation, or they don't provide liquor, and they're not within a retail center that has four or more units. So, those, in summary, we also clarified in our height exceptions that clock and bell towers that are inferred allowed as kupolas. We're just spelling that out to make it a little more clear. So, after the public hearing, be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much. I would like to open the public hearing at this time. This is a public hearing. Anyone that has any comments to this particular item, please come to the podium or the lectern. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President, and you look absolutely fantastic sitting in that seat. Pamela Gero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I had came to council based on several of the gas station owners reaching out to me about the fact that the city was enforcing and making them move the ice machines, and one of the gas station owners did come to a council meeting to talk about the very thing, and I think he spoke to Councilman Mandelbaum at the COW meeting. What I'm not understanding, based on this zoning change and the current policy, it says that if a ice machine has a lock on it outside, then it's not in violation. Can you clarify as to whether or not that's true, that if they put a lock on it, they would not be in violation? The other thing that I came to the city about was those clothes bins that are outside. A lot of the gas station owners feel like you're harassing them about their retail sale of ice, but you've got these ugly boxes that in some cases obstruct the view, and this is okay. Now, why do we need clothing boxes at all when St. Vincent's, DePaul, the Purple Heart, Salvation Army, they pick up those clothes? Why do we need bins in the city? And why don't you bring them and put them on the city site somewhere if you think that they're good and appropriate? Put them in the parking lot somewhere near Parks and Rec. We park the buses here, SMART buses, and why not people come to the city and drop off their clothes? I just don't think that it's necessary. And I spoke to Terry Crowe, the planner, and was asking about the ice machine at my friend's place, which is down there on 8 Mile and Chiawasi, and if I remember correctly, and you correct me, Terry Crowe, you said that if the plans were redone and the plans included an ice machine, then it would be allowed. Is that true? So, that's the question that I have, and I want you guys to really think about some of these policies that you're putting in place. We already have a lot of property that you can't sell and that you can't lease out, and with all of these policies, you're really turning people to communities like Latre Village, to Redford, and to the east or south side of 8 Mile. So, that's all I have to say about that. And congratulations, Mrs. Council President Pro Tem Lenny Taylor.
Again, this is still, the public hearing is still open. If there are any other folks that would like to come to the lectern to give commentary on this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
I think Mr. Crowe has something.
If I could, I'd like to respond to a couple of comments that were raised. If you recall, at gas stations, the regulations only allow auto-related accessories as outside storage, and ice chests were determined not to be auto-related. I don't know where the speaker came up with, if an ice chest is locked, it's in compliance. This was something that was on the books in cleaning up. With regard to the unattended bins, this was an unregulated item that has been popping up throughout the city, not only in gas stations but retail centers everywhere. So, we, when we were reviewing outside storage, we thought we had an unofficial policy, let's make it official through the council and get it on the books. Now, this one particular item, we're asking and recommending that the council consider adopting all the amendments with the exception of the unattended bins, because after conferring with the city attorney, there's some work that needs to be done to establish the business and licensing of these that we would like to be done at the same time. So, I am recommending that the council consider approving the proposed amendments, but with, specifically to the unattended collection bins, to postpone that to a date certain of December 17th to give us more time to research the other components of the bins.
Mr. Ficassi? Yes, Mr. Chairman, to a planner, what did you say about the McDonald House?
Well, there was...
You say poor condition?
There was, the owner was considering a legitimate proposal to sell the property and have the house torn down to build multiple family. The Historic Commission met, would like to preserve the house and to give the owner a feasible additional business use for the site. We considered and developed regulations for bed and breakfast so that we can preserve that building and allow that to continue to generate income so that the house would be preserved, and in a very narrowly focused instances, they'd have to come through special land use to council to get those approvals. My understanding of that was unofficially being operated as an Airbnb already.
As what?
An Airbnb, so off the books, through the internet, they were renting out rooms. So, we wanted to try to legitimize that in order to preserve the building, in addition to some of the office and retail uses that the council previously permitted for that site. So, this was an opportunity to put something on the books to help preserve the building as opposed to having it demolished.
Just a point of order, the Historic District Commission denied her request to demolish the building.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a comment on this one item, that I was the former owner of that facility, and we put over $350,000 into that building, new roof, new eve troughs. We got the city, Building Department to come over and check everything. We put all the various things that they needed, and that thing was in perfect condition and used it for, by a builder as an office, and he sold to his present owner. I just wanted to clarify that this thing is in really good condition. They put new shingles on and everything.
Right, and again, through the chair, our goal is to preserve the building and to give it viable uses and options for income.
And then, moving on to the item regarding the gas stations, I have a petition that was received by the city clerk April 20th of this year, and I'd like to read it. "I would like you to look at ordinance of the ice box, Section 5.28, Chapter 45. I would like you to look at the ordinance and appeal for your local gas station owners in the City of Southfield. We love the community and we love the city. The ice box is service that we use to sell ice to the local residents of the City of Southfield. So, please look at this ordinance for your local gas station owners in Southfield. I'm writing this letter to the city to please allow us to continue to have the ice boxes outside the building. It would be greatly appreciated if you would look at appealing this ordinance for us." It's signed by 10 gas station owners. I'd like to ask, how many gas stations that we have in the city that actually fix automobiles? I think just two that I'm aware of.
A handful. Through the chair, a handful.
Could you tell me the ones?
I believe the ones at 12 Mile and Evergreen.
Yeah, yeah, and you have one at 11 Mile Road, Shell at 11 Mile Road, the one across the street, he gave it up. He used to service all the post office, but he made it a D store, a C store. So, most of them are C stores now.
Right, and again...
Very few of them really serve the community as far as advancing their clients and getting more customers and fixing automobiles.
There's one at Telegraph at 10 Mile, I believe, a BP.
Remember, that one's being converted. Remember, it was recently approved to be converted to a C store.
And I just think it's very important to have a station. And the other point I want to make, and I'll put it forward, I'm very familiar with the one at 12 Mile and Evergreen, and I might add that he is completely redoing his store, his gas station, on the south side of the street, and even making it better than that, it's making it look like the shopping center that is surrounding it.
Right.
And you know, and the funny part about it is that they still gave him a ticket for not having a door on his rubbish over there on the south side. He had to go to court and pay $150 while he got the thing on, and he paid $2,700 for that coverage of that rubbish container, and he's gonna have to tear it down now because he's got this building on that site.
That particular site is in front of the Planning Commission this Wednesday.
Yeah, I understand. And I'd like to also mention that, that, you know, they just bothered him again with his dumpster, and he put a door on that one, and from that particular dumpster, you can see his next-door neighbor does not have a door, and the one that's next door to him doesn't have anything, and they don't get a violation or even a warning. I'm just pointing this out because, you know, I don't know what Code is doing, but I'm really ticked off about this, because, you know, you talk about site plans, and the city goes in and cuts down his three flowering crabs so that the next-door neighbor could, they could see his liquor sign, and that was on his site plan. And that was on his site plan, and they were not replaced. And he just did an entire landscaping and got an award, this last community award date. You know, he put new canopies on the Shell gas station. In the very little corner of the canopy, there was a shell. That's company, by the company. He was asked to take that down because it was against his sign ordinance. Right, left two holes in the two canopies, four sides. All right? I mean, it's ridiculous, and little businessman trying to make a living and trying to do the best he could for the city gets caught in these things. And he puts a slab down with a place for a handicap to come up to the door, and he's got, and the one that's on his site plan is backed by his rubbish container, right? And when he's asked to move, when he wanted to move the sign where the ramp was, the city said he'd have to come in and do another site plan.
That's right.
And they told him that was like $350 to redo the site plan. I'm just going through it because I just don't know, you know, and then on the front page of the Sun today is a tire company, I guess automotive, and he's got tires out right at the front page, and there's a sign on it. That's illegal, really, right? He's got a sign on his tires.
Through the chair, through the chair, and I'm not for the sign. I understand.
But, you know, if you look back at what this man has put up, I wouldn't stay in this city for eleven hundred money. And I don't understand why code is doing everything, this guy next door wants to come. Matter of fact, at the hearing, at the end of the planning, he's the only one that showed up. All right? And it has nothing to do with the shell, it has to do with his business across the street that he's spending probably a million bucks, $2 million on to redo that building for the city of South, making it look good. You know, and none of that, I mean, this goes on and on and on. You know, when we did Evergreen Road, we cut off the water line that goes from where the tanks are in the ground, and there's a pump in there that when the water rises so high, the pump gets the water and throws it out. There's a bobbler in there, all right? Well, they plugged that up. Water got in the gas, it cost them $18,000 to have that all pumped out and put new gas in. I'm just, you know, I don't know how a man would even put up with this stuff. And I just, and being a small resident, and, I mean, a resident and being a small businessman way back in the early days of the city, you know, I mean, I don't, I think we should admire small business people in the community because they're the ones that talk to Ma and Pa and help them with a tire and help them pick up their car and those kinds of things. They're good for a city. You know, that's what communities are all about. And I just get tired when this thing came from legislative, and I know that, and it's, I don't know if they're aware of all these things that happened, you know? But, you know, he had a lottery, when they had the big number on the Lotto, they had cars all over the place because they're in buying Lotto tickets, you know? And they got a warning for having cars on the property. I mean, it just happened. Now, he just got a ticket again, a ticket this time, for having an unlicensed car on his premise, all right, that he's supposed to fix, that came in from Florida with no tag on it. The guy took the tag off, and he's supposed to fix it for the guy. And it happened to be outside, and he got a ticket for it.
That's a risk.
You know, I mean, every time I go and have a coffee over there, I see another one, another one, and I say, I don't know how much more this guy could handle. And, you know, and he's tried everything, put up plantings out, and I think all the gas stations do a real service to this community. But if they all become C stores, you know, I mean, it'd be just a matter of time before they're out of business because, whatever, you know, they're going to be delivering groceries to the doors from now on.
Right.
You know, between Amazon, Myers, and everybody else. And the last thing is, what do we do with Krogers, Myers, Michaels, Home Depot, Lowe's, everybody else that puts plants out in front, pumpkins out in front, and all these that sell them outdoors? They don't have any, I mean, there's no zoning that permits that. And, you know, you take a little businessman and you beat him up. And this, I, you, Chair, I'm not-
Well, most of the issues are codes.
I said this about it, go over and talk to the guy. Somebody's got to go over there before, besides a code enforcement person, and say, hey, you know, we love you, you know? Charter is, what the Chamber of Commerce just told this one that's on the front page of the news, boy, it's small business, how it's important in a community, you know? And, you know, we can't always go to Amazon and all these other, Walmart and all these things.
Right.
You know, anyway, that's-
Well, we got some council people that want to speak.
Right. I just want to remind the council that this does not prohibit a gas station owner from fixing cars, and it allows auto-related accessories, tires, windshield wipers and stuff, to continue to be sold and displayed outside. This is only dealing with the ice chests.
But why only an ice chest? Mr. Chairman, I mean, why? I would come after somebody just for one ice chest. How many are in the city? How many did you count? Three, four?
Seventeen out of 38 were noncompliant.
Okay.
And several of them, after they got their notice, converted from outside to inside.
They had room inside.
They had room.
Well, they made-
The ones that don't have room inside have to get rid of them. And that's money that they make on the side.
Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, I know when the count was made, when your folks went out and made the count on outside storage, there was also, there were also a number of businesses that were not gas stations that had outside storage, dollar stores and all. Is this also covered in the-
Well, at the time, we inventoried those non-gas station businesses, and the legislative committee wanted to just focus on this amendment at this time, because there's already something on the books that prohibits outside storage at those other businesses.
Well, it's-
It was the fact that the gas station had their regulations under definitions. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to clarify that. But those other stores that you're mentioning already are prohibited from putting outside storage, it's just a matter of enforcement.
Yeah, I know that, I have a high regard for the chairperson of the legislative committee. And I remember talking about that, that we also need to have the code enforcement put as much effort in the other stores, the other businesses that have outside storage as they do with the gas stations.
Through the chair, we agree, and it was just that that didn't have to be fixed in the ordinance because there was something on the books. And as you know, we also are concerned about accessibility, and many of these other stores that put stuff outside are really impeding the barrier-free access to the front of their stores.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris.
Yes, Terry, I've just got two questions.
Sure.
And I know you're going to be doing more research, but regarding the unattended collected, collection bins, are we going to have a maximum in the city? And do we have a maximum now?
Well, what the proposal is to regulate them to only three districts in the city, so that would in itself limit, not allow more than one at a particular site unless they can prove there's a demand. And one of the things that I think is important to review is, a lot of people donate goods hoping that they make them to people with less fortunate. And these are really profit businesses, that they take the stuff and sell them on a third market to third world countries and make a profit off of them. So those that mentioned the religious institutions that do those collections and the Salvation Armies, and these things have been popping up, unregulated, unapproved, even by the property owners in many instances. They're not there, and then they're there. So this was a way to, as part of our outside storage review, to try to control something that's quite frankly got out of hand, that there wasn't anything on the books for.
I understand in three districts, regions, I just think we need to have a maximum number. And maybe we can come up with whatever that's going to be.
Yeah, and that could be something as we continue to review this. We did exclude them from neighborhood and general business and only allow them in regional shopping type of centers, so the larger centers that are more accessible on major thoroughfares and in light industrial districts. So those are the three districts that we're limiting. We're limiting to one per site, and they have to prove after 90 days there's a demand for a second one. But in some cases, there are five different operators just popping these things up, taking away legitimate required parking spaces, blocking sites, not having, you know, the proper maintenance and care. And I can tell you, again, a number of the property owners haven't approved or proved these things.
And so as it stands, do we know how many we have in the city?
We would have to do a comprehensive inventory of that, but we did, when we went out and took some photos, we did kind of an unofficial review. I don't have that exact number in front of me.
Okay, well, maybe about 17.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Braywell.
Through the chair, Mr. Crowe, I think this is a very good idea, you guys going through and cleaning up, and I thank the legislative committee for directing this. And I'm assuming, and I want to find out, as you probably know, I like best practices, how similar is what we're doing here similar to all the other, our surrounding communities with respect to the boxes, the service stations?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to the city attorney because she did some initial research on this, but we are looking at best practices. California is a model that we looked at. Novi locally is a model that we looked at, and we kind of developed a hybrid based on some of the other communities that are regulating these things.
Okay, okay. All right. If you, yes, ma'am, if you feel-
Through the chair, yes. When I came on board last week, I looked at the ordinance regarding the unattended bins, and I did some quick research. The city of Novi recently adopted an ordinance regarding the unattended bins, and they based it upon a California ordinance. There has been some litigation concerning the unattended bins in the Sixth Circuit, which controls our state of Michigan regarding First Amendment issues. So I wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with the Sixth Circuit decision, which is the Planet Aid decision versus the city of St. John's.
And if I could, through the chair, that was dealing with freedom of speech and signage more than it was the regulations of these things. We're not prohibiting what is on them.
Right. But the primary thing, we are being proactive, and we're looking out for the best interests of the city, and we are looking at nationwide things that are similar and what can be applicable here in Southfield.
Of course, we always look for best practices and then tailor to our particular needs.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I've had a question to ask the planner.
All right.
The gas stations sell, we say gasoline filling service stations, so the resale, retail sales as permitted in this chapter. And wiping out on B, what the one I have here is doing away with motor oil, wipers, scrapers, retail sales. Does that mean that you can't sell lottery, you can't sell cigarettes?
No.
You can't sell pop?
Through the chair.
Can't sell groceries?
No, that's, we're taking it out of the definitions and putting it into the districts.
Where's it being redone? Where's the definitions? I looked through it, I don't see anything that, that A, B, C.
The crossouts are for, those items were specifically in the definition section, and we have moved them to the zoning districts that permit gas stations, so they're now regulatory as opposed to the definition section. So we still continue to allow auto-related accessories and those ancillary retail sales under the gas stations, under the districts that allow gas stations. We've taken it out of the definitions, which I believe the city attorney will back me up, is difficult to enforce regulations that are in the definitions and not in your actual ordinance itself. So that's all that is, is just cleaning it up from the definition section and moving it under to, under, for example, B3 that allows gas stations, and then those regulatory requirements are in underneath the gas station special land use.
Is that in the documents that we gave me?
Yes, it is, yes.
I see articles and definitions, and the ones that I have in A, B, and C have deletions on them.
Again, if you go to the section-
Is that page eight of 39?
Yeah, that's the, that's cleaning up the definition section. And then those regulatory requirements have been moved to the specific zoning ordinance sections that permit gas stations.
What page would that be on? I don't know, I haven't got that. I got, I got two of them.
So if you look, for example, under the B3-
What is it?
B3 general business on page 38 of 43. Under gasoline stations, which are special land use, subsection 10 has those merchandise related to the primary use of gas stations listed specifically under, under special land use regulations as opposed to definitions.
On page 38 of 39?
38 of 43. So it's under the B3.
38 of 39.
B3, uses permitted subject to special approval.
I don't have that.
And then under-
May I go to that one too?
Gas stations, and then subsection 10, it says there shall be no outside storage or display of any kind except for the display of new merchandise related to the primary use of gas stations. Example, automotive accessories such as windshield washer fluid, motor oil, wipers, scrapers are similar as determined by the planning director, which may only remain outside. So it's from definitions to the regulatory sections.
No, I don't, I take his word for it, I'm just saying is that making things complicated, I'm going to go in the gas station business and look at what I can do. What I can't do.
All right. Is there any other, any other comments or questions on this item? All right. If not, then we can move forward. We need to introduce ordinance?
If we could, through the chair, you have to approve, approve the text amendments first.
Approve it.
And again, with my friendly amendment of accepting the bin, unattended collection bins and postponing that to December 17th.
Entertaining motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve public hearing PSL U 180008 zoning ordinance text amendments, as well as the opportunity to give Mr. Crowe and the planning department more time to research the unattended collection bins, and we'll be hearing from him on December 17th.
Ms. Park.
All right, it's been properly moved by Councilwoman Morris and seconded by Councilman Frazier that we approve PSL U 18-008 zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V zoning and planning of chapter 45. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Please note that, and that is with the one, with the friendly amendment.
Can I have them, can I tell them, Adam Clerk, to make sure they get a full, I can send it to these other dealers? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1699.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Councilwoman Morris, that we introduce ordinance number 1699. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I have.
All right, we've approved this.
Could I ask your attorney, should this have been an emergency introduction because we did it the same night as we passed the ordinance? did it the same night as we passed the ordinance rather than wait for a week?
I don't believe it should be an emergency.
You don't think it should be? Okay. Because I know in the past, it seems as if we do the ordinance and introduce it the same night, I mean, approve the, approve the ordinance and then introduce it on the same night that it was done as an emergency.
Through the chair, I'm not sure if that's the way it's been done in the past.
Well, through the chair, it's been tradition that it's approved and introduced, but it won't be enacted to your next regular meeting, and that gives that ten-day veto.
Okay.
So that's, it'll be enacted at your December tenth meeting.
Good enough.
So, and we will, we'll do a little more homework on the number of bins before then.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no site plans today. We'll move right into communications. First request for recognition is Pamela Gerald. Please come to the lectern, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President. On January seventh, twenty eighteen, negative news reports began surfacing about Southfield Sapphire Apartments. The report stated that Sapphire was without heat and water, which forced the new, which forced the now homeless residents to flee to local hotels for shelter. Both of the boilers at Southfield Apartments had failed, causing numerous water pipes to burst. In addition, without heat, the apartments were unlivable in the winter months. Slowly, things began to improve, and residents eventually moved back into their apartments. Then on May thirtieth, twenty eighteen, again, negative news reports began reappearing about Southfield Apartments. This time, it was the air conditioners that failed along with additional broken water pipes. To this very day, Sapphire Apartments continue to be plagued with more problems. Just go online and you'll see it for yourself. For example, recently, the basements were flooded, and the residents using the storage area lost everything they had in storage. Throughout the year, my husband and I have been monitoring the apartments, been monitoring the problems at Sapphire Apartments, meeting with residents individually and collectively, and observing all of the building department inspections. One question that remains constant with the residents, when is the city of Southfield going to condemn Sapphire Apartments? Now, what I think really deserves to be duly noted is, last January, former council president Dan Brightwell told Sapphire Apartments at a council meeting that he would personally inspect the Sapphire premises. At a later council meeting, he reaffirmed and said that he did go over there, personally inspected the premises, and now the question we need to ask is, to whom did the inspection benefit? The residents or council person Dan Brightwell? On September the eighth, twenty eighteen, while Sapphire Apartments was still under investigation, Dan Brightwell took a five hundred dollar campaign contribution from the owner of Sapphire Apartments, Mr. Sean Stafford, plus he took an additional five hundred dollars from the president of Sapphire Apartments, Kirsty Ernst, for a grand total of a thousand dollars. Now, this can be verified on the Oakland County Clerk's website. This is clearly a conflict of interest, and at worst, this brings to mind the ghost of Bill Lattimore. Dan Brightwell, don't you think that you owe the Sapphire residents an apology for taking from their slum landlord thirty pieces of silver? And we know who took thirty pieces of silver in the Bible. It was Judas. Shame on you, because when you ran in twenty fifteen, you talked about no corporate money. You all over corporate money.
Our next request- Just for a moment. Ms. Gerald, you have a history of putting out misinformation, and what you just-
You took a five hundred dollar campaign contribution from both of them. Now, did you not state it on the official public record? Did you take a five hundred dollar campaign contribution?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. Gerald, Ms. Gerald. Mr. Brightwell has the floor.
Don't tell me my information is false, if you don't have information. You took it.
Go ahead, Mr. Brightwell.
The Oakland County Election Bureau had my campaign financial report.
You took a five hundred dollar contribution from Sean Stafford.
They have my, my financial report is open record, and your misinformation is-
That's where it got him from.
You were implying that I'm doing something wrong, and-
I implied that you took-
Ms. Gerald, excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Gerald, this is not a back and forth, okay? Mr. Brightwell has the floor, let him give his commentary, please. Thank you.
I'm going to reiterate, my finance campaign report is on open record, and anybody in the state of Michigan, in the United States of America, or in Russia can go take a look at that campaign financial report, and I can justify every dollar there, that's why they are there. That's it, Chair.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight zero three three. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I would like to talk about Section four point one. Section four point one in the Southfield City Charter. Section four point one deals with how and when council elects the council president. That's you, Mr. Chairman. And I quote from Section four point one. "The council, at its second regular meeting in November of each year, shall elect a council president," unquote. Last week, on Monday, November seventeenth, the first regular meeting in November, you folks here illegally and incorrectly elected the said council president, that is Lloyd Cruz. Council, check your schedule closely, more closely than usual, and you will find that tonight's meeting is the second regular meeting in November. What happened? How did you folks manage to screw this one up and thus violate this charter? Was it because you folks didn't remember? Remember that you canceled, canceled the November eighth meeting because of the then-upcoming state general election, or were you folks just, just asleep? Asleep at the switch, which is power for this council, the council that can't stay awake? If you folks can't do a simple, routine administrative detail mandated by this charter, how do you folks ever, ever expect to do something really big, big and difficult like Northland and do it correctly? The answer is this, you can't, no way, nada, as this council has demonstrated time and time again. Just drive by Northland on any given day, and you'll see what I mean. The solution is this, we need a change, a complete change, a total makeover of this council, a change beginning with next November, November twenty nineteen. Thank you.
Our next person, next request for recognition is Ms. Yolanda Haynes.
My name is Yolanda Haynes, I reside at two-four-five-zero-one, Kinsel, here in Southfield. Last week, I was saying thank you to a lot of people, and I wanted to say congratulations to the outgoing and incoming councilmen and women, and also congratulations on the election as well, very good job done. And also, the Fall Harvest Dinner was an excellent idea, and it was a very good turnout, it was very, very nice. Congratulations to the mayor, to staff, Mike Mannion and his staff, all that they've done with everything with that, and anything that goes on in the city. You know, I like to see a lot of the positive things that we do have going on, and I think it's important that we continue to do those things to help promote our city. And just out of curiosity, I know we have a time limit on when we speak, maybe sometimes if some of the topics that you all talk about, you can put a time limit on some of the conversation about it. I mean, they seem to kind of go on unnecessarily. I mean, I know you have closed chambers where you talk about stuff and get information ahead of time, it's just, you know, it kind of belaborst things, and you're just kind of sitting there wondering, why are we sitting here, you know, when there are other things that could either be discussed or can be moved on? Just, just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next request is Mr. Harold Hill. I don't believe he's here. Our next request is Ms. Stacy Jackson.
Stacy Jackson, two-one-six-eight-five, Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-three. I am also the president of the Beachwood Acres Homeowners Association, and I'm here tonight to reiterate that, when I show up here, it is never to come here to pester my public officials that I actually elected and voted in. I am here always with the purpose of the people. Again, I reiterate, not much has been done or said for the residents across the city pertaining to the septic tank issue. Once again, residents are still receiving threatening letters from the city, threatening thirty days to get certification or be forced to connect to the city sewer. If I could, through the chair, to Councilman Ficassi, I actually liked your analogies referring to the gas stations. What I do is, would like to challenge you to stretch that scenario to sixteen hundred, not residents or properties, but sixteen hundred families that are on septic tanks, that are going to be forced to have their homes considered uninhabitable and evicted from their homes, for a ordinance that the city enacted nearly twenty years ago and failed to enforce. Now, when I was elected homeowner association president, we have the cheapest gas in town, so I see everybody there. But residents also come up to me and our family crying in tears because they're being pushed out of their homes with this ordinance. So the first course of action that I had was to reach out to all the homeowner association presidents to see what's happening in their communities. That was September ten. Shortly thereafter, one of the residents provided that letter, obviously to the mayor, because I didn't send it to him, and that's not a problem, he just wasn't invited to the party. The mayor then sent a letter of his own out to all the association presidents except me. Two days later, unbeknownst to the mayor, residents across the city received a threatening letter from city code enforcement, threatening them to either get a certification or be forced to connect to the city sewer. That was the same letter that the city manager said that someone took the date off and put their own name. What I would say to the council president, with your experience in higher ed, and also to the mayor, when you have a student that removes the date and put their own name to a piece of work, they typically, that's grounds for academic integrity, you know, it violates that. Should we not expect more from our city officials and city employees? This will be my last time coming to council. My next step is federal. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition, Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today? I'm here on behalf of all RAC and Life Matter, P.O. Box twenty-seven sixty-nine, four-eight zero three seven. Well, she said the next step, well, the next step is here. We got over twelve hundred applications from the feds. We also recruited twelve attorneys to help us fill them out properly. Now, let me give you the statistics of how this works here. Out of every twenty people, only two are white that's facing this ordinance. The rest are African-American. Out of every twenty, twelve are seniors, okay? Out of every twenty, seven are veterans. Out of every twenty, nine are handicapped seniors. So, saying that, we have a race issue, we have a handicap issue, we have an elderly issue, and all of this is because of the ordinance. And we got some greedy people up here who want to just purchase houses as we lose them. Let me say something to you, we're not standing down, we're only getting better at the fight. I was so proud to hear from twelve attorneys to say that they would help us fill out these applications, and I was so proud of the federal government to send me these great big boxes who'd say, we want to know more about Southfield. Southfield is a very racially controlled city, or we wouldn't have Ray O'Donnell back here. We have a strong issue in this city of taking homes from people who just bought them, people who haven't been in their homes twelve years, like us, facing an ordinance that the previous owner should have been picking up. This is a big issue, and it's not going to look good for the names of our political leaders that we're going to put on that application, which three of you nice people ain't got to worry about nothing, because we know which names to put on there. This is unfair to the residents. And you sit here and you, you say, oh, well, this ordinance has been around for twenty years. Yeah, but why didn't you enforce it twenty years ago? Why didn't you do your job? You talk about code enforcement, but code enforcement didn't enforce it twenty years ago. You going to wait till new African-American homeowners buy these homes, and you're going to let older, white residents sell them through some of the highest housing bubble to us? I could have bought my home a hundred thousand dollars cheaper if you would have did your job. But we have something here, and we're going to take it to the top. I'm telling you, this is going to happen. Thank you.
Our next, next I'd like to recognize Sonia Simpson Gardner.
Council members, Council President, thank you so much for allowing me to come up. I am Sonia Simpson Gardner, who resides at three-zero-five-seven-five, Old Dream Street in Southfield, Michigan. I presented for the first time to you last week, and I would like to give you the opportunity to digest the information that I provided. I know I was extremely emotional, and I've had some time to think about some things, and that's why I'm coming to you. I did tell you that previously I did present this information to the police department, the police chief, I presented this information to the mayor, I looked for their internal affairs department, and no one has attempted to help me, so I am coming to you again. I am going to come to you, actually to every city council meeting that I possibly can, looking for help. If I have to have a private meeting with you, then that's fine, but I need help. I've already expressed that. There is no coincidence to me that after I presented to you guys, not even two, three days later, when I told you that I did not have a job, that the only income or assistance that we did have, which was a bridge card and the medical for my daughter, has been cut by the state, so that is no coincidence to me that that also got cut. This is nothing new to me, and it's been happening. Now we have nothing. So I already told you, we have a major system or a major issue with the plumbing in my house, which is no coincidence that I'm being told that my plumbing is so severe that my house needs to be dug up so the plumbing issue can be fixed. And now we don't have my bridge card, we don't have medical, and I cannot find a job. So there's no coincidence that all of these things are happening to me. And I've already told you that I've been under attack, I've listed some things, I have a seven-page letter that I would like to provide to you guys, I would like for you guys to read. I am asking for help, and I am going to be extremely public about this matter. Previously, I was blocked, I told you my email was blocked, my cellphone was blocked, I tried to send email letters to you guys, and the letters did not go through to you guys. Now I have the opportunity to talk and conversate with you guys, and I will take every opportunity that I possibly can to be- that I possibly can to be an advocate, to make sure this never happens to no one. I am going to go to the state to make sure that if anyone is ever mandated or mandatory reporter, their information is not outed, so they will never, ever have to go through what it is I'm going through. So, I am asking you to stick with me, to help me, and to not ignore me. I am being ignored by the police department. They're acting like this is going to go away. It has been going on for almost three years, and no one is helping me. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And if you'd like to give that letter to the clerk, I think she can make it available to all of us so we can.
I would, thank you.
Check it out. Alright, thank you. Alright. I'd like to move next to the council portion of the meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move the approval of the travel expense for Daniel Brightwell to attend the Michigan Political Leadership Program.
Support.
Alright. It's been properly moved, Mr. Mandelbaum, and seconded by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the travel expense report for Daniel Brightwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any council members have any announcements or anything?
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to remind residents again that tomorrow night, we have our tree lighting at the Berg at 6:30 PM. It will be a very nice event. There will also be visits with Santa and refreshments to follow. Also, this Saturday is the first day that you can pay your taxes, so please make sure that you don't spend all your money on Christmas gifts, and that you have some left over to pay for your taxes. The city will be closed on Saturday, but make sure Monday, when they open, the city treasurer will be happy to collect those if you wish to pay them. Other than that, have a good evening. Thank you.
Any other council members? Alright, and we'll move to the mayor's portion. Mr. Mayor?
I have two expense items I'm asking you to approve this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Mayor Kenson Cyver to the Michigan Municipal League Convention, September 19th to 22nd.
Support.
Alright, it's been properly moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the travel expense for Mayor Cyver for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. All those in favor, sign them by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Mr. Kenson Cyver, Mayor, to the DomoCo-Momo National Symposium, Design Community Progressive Preservation, September 26th to 29th in Columbus, Indiana.
Alright. It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the expense report for Mayor Cyver attendance at the DomoCo-Momo National Symposium. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, very good.
Thank you. The only other thing I have, we are continuing the big rake this Friday and Saturday. We have had to put a, I guess, we've just ended applications. We just can't handle all the people that have asked for help. We are looking for more volunteers. We've been, it's been tough with, the weather has not really cooperated with us, the amount of precipitation we've had, but we're on for this Friday and Saturday. Forecast looks pretty good. We could use more volunteers. We start at 9:30 on Saturday morning, December 1st, in the lobby of the Southfield City Hall. To show up, if you don't have a rake, we'll provide one, and we provide the bags. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Zorn, anything?
I have no items this evening, thank you.
Alright, very good. We have one item under the Attorney's Section, Proposed Resolution. Would you like to speak to that?
Through the chair, thank you. As this honorable body knows, on November 6th, 2018, the Michigan voters approved the Michigan Regulation Taxation of Marijuana Act, which goes into effect on December 6th. I have drafted and presented to the council a resolution regarding a 180-day moratorium with regard specifically to recreational marijuana establishments. Although it is true, the Michigan Department of Licensing and Business Regulation has one year to come up with regulations regarding licensing of business establishment and the license holders, there are instances in consultation with the planning director where perhaps some business owners could sneak in the sale of marijuana accessories, or people could simply give marijuana away. So, we wanted to have this moratorium in place so that we can study this issue and look to guidance from the state and other communities as well.
Thank you. And we have reviewed this already in our previous study session and so forth, so I think we should need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the proposed resolution for a 180-day moratorium as it relates to recreational marijuana establishments.
Support.
Alright. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we adopt the resolution of a 180-day moratorium regarding the use of recreational marijuana establishments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, then, proposal's accepted.
I have nothing else, thank you.
Nothing else? Alright, very good. Adam Clerk, is our treasurer here today? Or any other folks? Doesn't look like it. No ordinances? Therefore, looks like there's nothing else from the council? What we got? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, you want to speak?
Thank you very much, Barbara Sheldon, 28315 West Klong Circle, Southfield, Michigan. I am Southfield Veteran Commissioner, and I wanted to say thank you so much for the wonderful opportunity that you gave the commission to have Veterans Day. I wanted to thank our mayor for his wonderful ideas, and I want to say that we're looking forward to a better presentation, even for Memorial Day coming up. It was very warm, it was very charismatic, and it was something that we hadn't accomplished before. Got so many compliments about how it was presented, and I just think that it was a wonderful presentation for our city. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Sheldon. Alright, there's nothing else from any of the council members? Meeting is adjourned.